Good morning. It's nine o'clock, August the ninth, twenty twenty one, and our regular Commissioners' Court meeting is now in session. First item on the agenda is roll call by our County Clerk, Mary Janet O'Malley.
Good morning, Judge Commissioner. Judge Ratna.
President.
Commissioner Mendoza.
President.
Commissioner Lisondo.
President.
Commissioner Solis.
President.
And Commissioner Garza.
President.
We have a call.
Thank you, Mary Janet. I'm excited to be here. Location by Pastor Roger Mitter, Commissioners' Court.
Good morning.
Pastor Mitter, good morning.
Good morning. We value your testimony this morning as we prepare our hearts. Our Father who provides, we again seek your wisdom this day and your involvement in the matters before these assembled leaders. So first, we will quiet our hearts and our minds as we prepare for the work before this court. And then we will open our hearts and our minds so that we may hear you today and may also hear each other. May those who have been chosen as our leaders be receptive to your voice this day as they seek to serve this community during these difficult times. May you guide them in their decisions which today they must make that impact the future of our community. May you provide wisdom and understanding, patience and boldness, courage and compassion as they lead. And we thank you for your hand which both leads and protects, and in Christ's name we humbly ask these things. Amen.
I am the Lord God, and the republic for which it stands, one nation, in the God, infinite and all, where there is justice.
Item number four, communications. Fire Chief Danny, how your report was?
Good morning, Judge.
Morning, Attorney.
Commissioner, morning, Chief. Well, as far as testing numbers, I do not see, given not any numbers like today, we had some issues as far as recording issues. We were shown a certain way how to test. We got our guys certified to do the testing. They told us how to do the recording end of it. And unfortunately, there was one critical factor missing as far as recording to the state. But I spoke to the judge. I will take that fault. It was my fault. But we did as we were told by the team how to record it. So there was one critical factor, but as of Friday on, all the testing we've been doing is going to reflect on the numbers that we're getting done. So it comes to the judge on a weekly basis. We're still trying to figure out from Friday back when we started, which was about two weeks of testing. So that's why I don't want to touch on the numbers yet because they need to be confirmed.
And many of those probably tests, I'm sure, have already, the time lapse.
Yes. When I see by the time that we do get the numbers, did we get the numbers, they're already going to be passed for ten days.
Right.
So it would be considered not to be, if they were still positive. But like I said, as of Friday on, those numbers will start to reflect on the judges. Whenever they send a confirmation to the judge, something will appear. We didn't even know as far as the numbers, but we already corrected the issue.
And Danny, there's nobody's fault here. I mean, we're, your department's doing an excellent job.
Yeah.
We're all trying.
Yeah, we do everything that, you know, what we think or how we're shown to do it, you know. So we expect them to show us the right way, and unfortunately.
I think all of us just want to make sure that we get accurate numbers to the public and make sure that, so we've been doing that and we're going to continue doing that.
Yes. Oh, yes. And all the numbers have been accurate.
Yes.
I'm not saying that they're inaccurate. They're accurate. There was a lagging between a couple of the numbers, but we already fixed these as of Friday.
Sure.
As far as vaccines, we were surprised. I didn't think we did that much from last Commissioners' Court till today. But we did have, just at the fire station, we did a total of one hundred and nine vaccines from last to today. Out of those, one hundred and nine ninety-five were first doses. So we are seeing a major increase on first doses.
That's good.
Ninety-five were first doses and fourteen were second doses. As far as the National Guard, they did a total of thirty-one. Pfizer's twenty-three first doses, second doses for Moderna, two and two, and No Johnson and Johnson. DSHS also is still doing Mondays and Tuesdays. And as of tomorrow, the tenth, they will start in San Ignacio offering both Moderna and Pfizer.
Okay.
But they will be in San Ignacio at the JP Constable's office tomorrow, Tuesday, and every other Tuesday after that. And we still have National Guard coming once a week, which is Tuesdays from twelve to seven, and they offer all three vaccines. And of course, less at the party farm, Monday through Friday, nine to three, but we only offer them Moderna.
What time is San Ignacio tomorrow then?
They start, they're supposed to start at nine. I don't know what the end time is, but they start at nine.
Start at nine?
Yes. And testing, we're still doing testing Tuesdays and Thursdays. We're trying to get with the state. I call them almost every other day to see if they can resume the testing like they were before. We don't mind doing it. We're just a little bit overwhelmed. And that's not, the issue's not that. It's that people do want more testing. We get calls every day, all day, and I think Tuesdays and Thursdays is not enough for the demand there is right now for testing. But we're trying our best.
It is a tactic in our department.
It is. It is checking the vaccines, you know, testing service calls. But I am concerned with the state trying to see if they can get the testing back. Even if they're not, I told them we can manage with them sending other people on Wolf to tell them how to do it. But we submitted a star request as well for that. So it seems like there's something hopefully we get the news from. So we can try and, the goal is to try and get testing Monday through Friday, because the demand is there. But for now, it's just Tuesday and Thursday for this week.
As far as your amitron, are you seeing more COVID symptoms?
Well, COVID, symptom cases, yes. I mean, we're not sure if they're positive or not.
But symptoms.
Yes. We've seen an increase in that as well. We've had transported a couple of people that know that they're positive and they do let us know. But we're starting to see the increase in the calls for COVID symptoms. It's going up again. It is going up. We know how it is as far as the restrictions with the masks. We cannot enforce it as far as the government county level. But I do highly suggest that we still wear our masks. I know we cannot make them do it, but because this Delta variant is very highly transmitted, it transmits very.
Admissible, yeah.
Yes. Even if you're vaccinated. So that's the reason why the rise in the numbers everywhere is because of that new variant. So I do recommend that people keep on using their mask as much as possible, even if you're fully vaccinated. And if you're not vaccinated, please try and get vaccinated as much as possible. The vaccines are there. They're everywhere in our county. You can get them any day. Just get them. That's all I can say.
Chief, and for your information and reports, I have been talking with the local DSHS office, and they are wanting to set up a thing in Opano as well for Opano and personal residents. We're working on that so we can offer the residents in that area an option as well. Probably maybe once a week.
Okay.
I think majority is based on, I had worked with Ms. Rosie Montzada prior to her retirement. She had kind of called off her clients in those areas, and most of them are already vaccinated. There are a few that are not. They were still a little weary of getting back to the vaccine. But we'll do everything we can to try to offer the access to them because a lot of them have transportation difficulties.
Exactly. We've always told the people, if they don't have the means of transportation, we will go to their friend and vaccinate them. Rosie had called me in regards to that Commissioner, and she had given me a list of about three people, I believe. And we went over there and had the three. I was only able to vaccinate one because the other two were, like you mentioned, at the end of the day, we decided they don't want, so they're not ready for it. But I mean, if you know of anybody that wants it and needs it, we will go there personally to their house and we'll vaccinate them. Just give me the info. We'll do that.
Absolutely.
Chief, are we doing any testing tomorrow in San Ignacio or just vaccines, no testing?
No, it's just going to be just vaccines, yeah, because we don't have enough people to be testing. The foot traffic is very high when we do testing. We don't have enough people to act here and over there. Unless DSHS does the testing, then that would be their deal. But us, we don't have the people to do it in both cases. But we're trying, like I said, we're trying to figure something out where we can get testing readily available to more people, more days, where it's more, you know, easier for them to get it, but the map is hard, but we're trying our best.
And I wanted to ask Danny, who's on that, that's two days without vaccine, because you guys are right there. They feel really comfortable.
Chief, one question. I've been getting a lot of calls as we all started last week.
Yes, sir.
We have elementary kids that are not vaccinated. How is this variant affecting the young kids that are not vaccinated?
Well, as far as symptoms, I really don't know because we don't follow up with them. DSHS is the one that follows up with the patients as far as whether they're going to get positive. What I do know is that, like I mentioned, but I'm not going to mention any numbers, so we're still fixing that issue prior to Friday. But what I do know is that there is quite a few students that are coming out positive. It shows that it is spreading amongst that age group from, you know.
Under twelve?
Under twelve, yes. I cannot give you specific as far as numbers because, like I mentioned, we're still trying to confirm those part of Friday. And most of them were tested prior to Friday, for the two weeks, the week before school and then the week during school. But we did see an increase of most of the positives that we did get were from that age group.
Now, what about the numbers or the effects in other states and other cities that have we seen that? Kids under twelve?
No, sir. I'm not going to lie to you. We have not looked into those numbers because we are very busy with our own thing going on here. But I'll look into it. I'll look into it. I'm not going to lie to you. I'll look into it and I'll give you everything.
Well, it's just that we do have every parent concerned and, you know, without the rights, you know, they have to be concerned for their safety. And we just got to advise them that it's not the school's fault. It's, you know, it's the state, you know, requiring them to go to school in person.
Yes.
You know, so that is our job, you know, to inform their community that, you know, it is not the school district. It is not the board members. It is not the court.
It's not the.
You know, it is from the state level.
I try to explain that because I do get a lot of calls as far as that. They've been asking me how, why do I allow a decency for the county for the school to receive? But like you mentioned, anybody that asks questions, they feel free to ask me. But it's not a liberty for Commissioners' Court or even the school board. It comes directly from the state.
From the governor.
From the governor, I'm sorry.
It's mandated.
It's mandated by the governor's office. So as long as our governor does not issue out anything as far as closures of schools, there is really nothing we can do at our level, the school district or Commissioners' Court.
And I believe school districts really don't have a choice because they're being threatened by the state level and that they don't continue in person, that their funding.
They wouldn't support it.
Can be adverse. So they have no choice other than having the kids go to school and not giving them the option.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Sheriff. Sure. Good morning, Sheriff. How are you?
Good.
Good. You might share some of your, the past two weeks with your office. I know with you attended several meetings.
Everything is going as follows. Just that with the car chases and bellouts have increased as well. My office has had some positives. We have had seven positives with one inmate as well. We don't know if it's due to us having contact with the vehicles or what, but we're taking all necessary precautions. And as of right now, Wolf Lobbies are going to be shut down. And we'll be answering phone calls and answering calls as normal.
Okay. No visitor traffic?
No. No visitors and no other outside agencies unless they're tested. I want to commend Chief Abbiya for being there at all times while I need my guys to be tested. He's been testing our office, Austin D., and, you know, we have to deal with it. I asked for prayers for Commander Hernandez. He is in the hospital right now, very ill, so his, him and now his significant other tested positive. And they both are my associates.
And I heard over the weekend.
These are numbers for the jail. Let's see, I'll give you Mr. Salinas' form of view of all the. Those numbers reflect on what we've been doing at the jail. It's been good for the county, and we're taking every necessary, you know, precautions for inmates as well. Quarantine them and also testing them where we can and also vaccinating them. We did receive two Stone Garden units. I don't know if you all have seen them. And we did receive two speed readers for the county as well, so we're going to deploy them this week. And there was a recall on one of the tacos, but we're fixing that right now in April.
Really nice vehicles. Yeah, I think you got them outside your office there.
The guys have deployed their new uniforms as well, so there's a new look for some of the county doing very well.
And the other units are on order?
Yes, sir. They're on order, and it's just a matter of the chip situation with the whole nation on waiting on. We're probably going to be getting four-by-four pickup trucks because of.
Have you ever been able to secure these two units?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we were a little bit the envy of the show because they were on the showroom at the conference, and everybody was.
I saw that, yeah. It's really nice about the county.
We got recognized, and a lot of the agencies went ahead and equipped their units like we did.
Sheriff, any update on the funding status from the state on the border security?
Well, I've been in contact with a kid, which is from Tigo, and we've been working on that. Because of the shooting from the Lubbock Sheriff, Kerry Row, he postponed a bunch of the meetings for the jails, and he'll resume this week on for us to meet face-to-face and then meet with the governor again. I was selected to go testify for the Homeland Security Public Safety Committee. They'll let me know when I need to go to Austin, and I'll keep you guys informed of the status.
And I wanted to commend you, Sheriff, for maintaining a strong presence on behalf of some other counties with the governor's office. I know you've been attending meetings quite often with the State Department heads and, of course, the governor himself. So we appreciate your service to our community.
And it's all a matter of all us working together and keeping our community safe and, you know, keep on moving forward and praying for our citizens to be safe. And everybody that's sick with COVID, I mean, it's not a joke. We got to take care of each other and keep our prayers strong.
Sheriff, how are we doing with the flaggers put to wrench?
We're going to deploy them this week. I know Mr. Rodriguez has a few as well. So we're going to be headed out different areas this week and put them up. We were at fifty-five on Friday, so I think we're a little bit more to seventy by this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Not when we want the public comment. The section provides the public the opportunity to address Commissioners' Courts on any items on the agenda. Any member of the public who wants to address the court, if not, we'll move on. Item number six, approval of invoices. And we have invoices in your package from July twenty-third, twenty twenty-one through August the fifth, twenty twenty-one, for a total of one million three hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Motion, move. Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to approve, second by Commissioner Garza, although the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number seven is approval of treasury report. Mr. Salinas, good morning. I see some red on the front page, Mr. Salinas.
Well, they're not major numbers.
No, it's not a bad thing.
It's just pointing at Kathy Utes.
Right. They're just sort of silly all conceded and not spent.
That's my initial thought, yes.
I'm sorry. I was going to explain that. I was talking to our auditors who are trying to finalize the audit. And when we're going over the figures, like the special road bridge and those funds that was keeping at the bank invested in the CDs, when you all get the audit, there was a huge amount of.
It's owed to the general fund, yeah.
That, it's owed to the general fund. So we just made an allocation on there and tried to highlight it and bring it in. And it just, I noticed that it's owed to the general fund.
Okay.
So those CDs, I'm still keeping them there, and as we need the money, you know, we'll go and transfer that money out and cover the overgraffed thing. So that's just a little notice, and I believe our county auditor has an item on the agenda. That's a general ledger entry. That's around fifty thousand to close out the Level Road and.
For, yeah, well.
Well, not to close it out here, but to move.
It's to refund the special road bridge.
Right. So I have some monies there that we will be changing those. One hundred and eighteen thousand, a little bit below the last one, where it says Level Road, one hundred and eighteen, and then the County Level Fund, one eighty-nine. So those two will, after you all approve that general entry, I'll go to the bank and close these two and transfer them to.
To the special road bridge.
To the special road bridge. So that's just the information for the court. So that page shows the investments at the bank. We have a total making a million hundred and nineteen thousand, and interest was two thousand four hundred and thirty-two point seventy-two. And year to date, we've earned forty-three thousand three seventy-three. Then there's a couple of pages following that. It's just each individual investment and their carry as lands for ninety days. And so we need the money, we need to go and cash them out and transfer them to our consolidated cash account. Page five are the checking accounts that are still open that we have not transitioned to the consolidated cash. But the operating account had one million eight hundred and fifteen, and then we deposited one million four hundred and fifty-eight, and then later we spent two million four hundred and ninety thousand. And we have many deposits, one million two thirty-five, three twenty-six. But this is at the end of the month, so those balances like this one, we're doing transfers out of there. The same with the general fund, showing one million one thirty-eight. So all that money has been transferred out. Some of it has been transferred out, but at the end of this month, most of those will be transferred to the consolidated cash account. And then the waterworks, the same thing down there, five hundred and one thousand forty-nine dollars. Then we put that one hundred forty-six thousand for the month, and we just haven't done any transfers out of just that small one, ninety thousand. And there's many thousands, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven fifty-four at the end of the reconsignment of my.
So trying to, the water project, the five hundred forty-six, I mean, we should be averaging three to four hundred thousand a month.
Yes, that was the only amount that we were able to see a month of. It might have gone to the consolidated cash, so that's why.
I know I'm averaging from three to four hundred thousand a month.
Yes.
So the accounts, Mr. Salinas, that are all these accounts that are affecting those zeros, those have already been transferred over to the consolidated cash?
That is very interesting. Yes. And there's a new report that I'm going to go over.
Okay.
Because I was asked last meeting how you all could see the balances in the checking account. So it's following a couple down on page ten. Then the other one, the other page, it shows the other accounts that are probably like the specials, and those took one minute six hundred thousand. Running costs is four hundred and seventy thousand, and there was expenses out of there, six hundred ninety-four thousand. And the outstanding balance loss account was one million three hundred and ninety-one thousand six eighty-four point twelve. Now, we have numbered it because this is the new report that's reflecting the balances. If you want to see how much is in, for example, the hotel, you go across the last one that shows the credit. Those are positive. And those that shows are negative, but in balance sheets, when you have consolidated cash, that is positive. That is how much money is in the bank, sixty-eight thousand.
Yes.
And then you see the tobacco settlement, one sixty-seven. You go across, there's a hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine seventy. This is the account that we'll see after we close all the other ones. The only two positives are the top of the consolidated cash and the consolidated payroll clearing. Those two are positives. And then the ones that you see under the debit column, those are money that are owed by those funds into the consolidated cash. So, but if you all have any questions, I'd be more than glad to explain that. But what you want to look at is the last column on the credit column. That is the positive dollar amount that belongs in that fund.
And we just have to get used to the new.
Yes. Yes. So this is a new report to help you provide you with.
And I want to go inside of you.
I know, I think our consultant is finishing up the thing this weekend, so he was going to get all the numbers to the auditors.
Yeah, we need that. We need a few months back, but it's going to start to take some more, Grant, so.
At this point, how late are we?
Well, June thirtieth. June thirtieth is the.
Later than late, yeah. It should be in by March. June is the, I guess, the forgiveness date.
Yeah.
We're past that.
So then it's basically by the time we submit it to the auditor, then it's going to take another.
Two, three weeks. So you're looking at August.
Probably latter part of August.
You're looking at being in September, so this is what I'm.
Going to be too late now.
Are you in contact constantly with?
Yeah, he comes every, like, five, two, three times a week, so.
I mean, I know we're certainly compensating him rather well, and I saw some of the invoices. Is he yet after it? I mean, are we getting?
You know, Mr. Salinas talks to him. I talk to him.
I mean, I've had conversations with him. Of course, it seems the blame is assigned to just about everyone in our.
But it all comes out to, you know.
But there is a significant lifetime between getting our information ready for the auditors to complete their independent audit. And I don't know exactly what the problem is that it just, but it is.
We have the same issue every year.
Every year.
Every second.
So we'll give him a call this morning and see if he can get an answer from the actual auditors, because I know he's constantly coming down more often. And he'll provide the numbers. He gets on the phone with him. I don't know if they're behind at their office. They always come up with excuses to think that other audits they have to get out. So I believe that they're putting this.
Well, their only way for his numbers is when it comes out to.
But what can we call again and issue?
I think we can stay on a daily basis. Do you want to tell me something else?
Okay.
The next page is the checks issued for the general fund. I'm looking at page seven. So we issued a total down to one million four hundred and eleven six oh one point forty-one. And year to date, we'll issue ten million two hundred and fifty-one thousand eight nineteen point forty. Page eight shows the amount of checks issued for all the funds, which totaled two million one hundred and eighteen nine point four one eighteen. And page nine is the other fifty. We saw a big amount of one hundred thirteen three fifty-two eighty-two, and water, four thousand seven oh six point ten. I know that we got an email from our consultant, and I think that we got held back some payments when we had the freeze back in February, I think. And so they told us that everything looked good, so to go ahead and pay that amount that was being left on page. So we'll check with Bobby once I list on that amount. Just a reminder. Then on page ten is the growth of the tech that we get from yield corp energy. And that comes in as a very deposit. For the month of July, we received six thousand two seventy-two point twenty-one. And year to date, we received fifty-eight thousand five hundred four point oh six. So we had budget forty-nine, so there are one hundred thirty-nine point seven percent collections. The next page is the rental. As we can see, for the month of July, San Ignacio Civic Center, we posted two hundred and fifty. And we don't see any other rental fees for the month, the box here, for the month of July.
I just want to mention on that, as an ordinary commissioner, that we're having some issues with maintenance at the pool. Apparently chlorine is also scarce right now.
Yes.
So we're having a lot of maintenance issues. We're having to keep up with the maintenance of equipment and facility here at the pool. So we get that.
The object was to drain the pool, but it'll be.
It, because we need it all, it'll crack, Judge, because it's in the direct heat. And I'm saying that's a little different because it does have a shaped cardboard, and so it's going to be a little bit.
And we have to, I mean, we have to store it.
Oh, yeah.
It's flooring year-round. We made the decision to, we made the decision, I don't know if it opened up this summer, but we made the decision to make due to COVID. But in support, you're right.
Page twelve, monthly revenues. County clerk deposited into the fund ten, six thousand one hundred seventy-five for the month, into fund fifteen, five thousand seven oh four point ten. Our district clerk, five thousand two ninety-one into fund ten, and then to fund fifteen, eight hundred ninety-seven. The ordinance, we had deposits of two hundred and eighty-five thousand for the month of July, and the sales tax, two hundred three thousand eight hundred twelve point seventy-six. The armed ordinance, we have collected a million two hundred and eighty. We budgeted eight hundred thousand, so that's a hundred seventy-two point fifty percent collections. The sales tax worth at a hundred one ninety-five. We budgeted two million. So we collected two million nine hundred thousand three eight dollars one cent. So that's what the center just.
All the funds seem to be, you know, we tend to budget rather conservatively, but not over. All the funds seem to be, you know, we tend to budget rather conservatively, but not overestimate what we think we're gonna get, so I'm glad the numbers are better than what we thought. It helps us at the end of the year to ensure our budget, we have money in the bank to finish the year out, so is this all good news?
Yes, the following page thirteen shows the landfill for July, we collected twenty eight thousand five hundred twenty four. The jail, two hundred and seven, six point four four point fifty eight. And as the sheriff provided us with this report, what we reflect here is probably like a month at a time, if they submit the claim to the US Marshals, and then we would just record as the money's to make.
So you'll see, with this report, we'll be right at budget, whatever we want, one point two million.
Yes, so right now it's at eight hundred and eighty two thousand.
Two months ago, Sheriff, you, with these difficult times, you were able to handle.
Right, because the total collected so far, it's eight hundred eighty two, seven oh five point thirty one, so the percentage is at seventy three point fifty six.
We're very close around the mark of the.
Yeah, one point two million, that was budgeted. The jail telephone, two thousand two oh eight point fifty. The jail bond fees collected were seven hundred and thirty five, jail office fees, two hundred and fifty. The EMS department brought in fifty nine thousand three hundred forty six point sixty four. And year to date, they collected four million two, four twenty point seventy four, which there is eighty point ninety two percent. The following page are the collections by our JP's, JP number one, brought in eleven thousand nine hundred fifty six point forty six. JP number two, thirty three thousand three ninety four thirty five. JP three, three thousand three thirty five point fifty six. JP four, thirteen thousand nine oh two point forty six. And the amounts for JP two and four are for the month of June and July, and that's the same case for JP number four. Their deposits for the month of June were probably like the following days, so we recorded on July first, so we don't record it for June. But actually, I'm not that.
It's incredible looking at the balances, I mean, they're probably over six hundred thousand dollars.
So we owe fifty percent of that, who's been paying back?
No, twenty seven.
Twenty percent?
Twenty seven. If it's a hundred dollars, it's thirty dollars over, so.
But but these, does this reflect what our percentage is?
It doesn't cut into our our amount, it's in addition to our.
So these numbers are what we're depositing?
What they're depositing.
The numbers above this are what's being paid to the to the collecting agency.
Well, if they're late, yeah.
Well, most of these are, I think, I would say more than sixty percent is the liquid.
So the percentage is kind of, you know, since it's not the whole full amount that you're sent out to collection, so.
But that's very good, that was, that's a good contract that the JP brought for us to consider, and it's been good.
It's worked out very nice.
We've seen very positive results.
Because I get people that say that they've been charged for tickets from ten years ago or things like that, so it's, they're always paying up.
That's the end of our report.
Motion by Commissioner Grosso, seconded by Commissioner Feliz, to include a treasury report that presented, although in favor of the Aye, motion carried. Item number eight, we have a pool of checks issued, we have checks from seven, twenty three, twenty twenty one through eight, five, twenty twenty one. For a total of one million three hundred and twenty three thousand two hundred sixty two dollars and seventy five cents.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Rasa, although in favor of the Aye, motion carried. Item number nine is a tax assessor collector departmental report, Ms. Dana Mendoza, Tax Assessor, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jazzy, yes. Let me just go ahead and point out the the tax collection rate. Twenty twenty, it's at eighty nine point thirty percent. Last year at this time was eighty six point sixteen. And we're almost at ninety percent.
Yes.
Okay, general funds for the collection of July, we had eighty five thousand three hundred ninety thirty six. The interest and sinking, we had thirty three thousand four hundred and eighty nine seventy. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that I had dropped off the reports there.
Yes.
Okay, farm to market, fifteen dollars twenty four. Special road and bridge, eight thousand eight hundred nineteen sixty seven. Delay for attorneys, we have fifteen thousand one thirty one, one thirty three. Total collections was one hundred and forty two thousand eight fifty seven point eighty two. Then we'll go down to the fee and collections. Alcohol and beverages, fifty dollars, tax certificates, twelve dollars. Hotel motel tax, four thousand seven hundred and fifty, fifty one cent. Interest earnings, twenty six dollars and fifty five cents, tax sale, eighty dollars. Holding net collection was one hundred and forty seven thousand seven eighty six eighty eight. And we paid out to the treasurer, one hundred and thirty two thousand six hundred and fifty five point fifty five. Hotel motel, we have year to date, ninety six thousand one thirty three hundred and sixty. And you'll have, you know, we have our refunds, you have the refunds in there. And the delay for tax.
So more than likely, we will surpass the ninety percent comp.
Yes, I think so. On the tax sale, I don't know if I had mentioned this to somebody, I'm totally asking if everyone understands that we have. But that we had collected like seventy nine thousand dollars in the tax bill that we had. Not not because of lease sales, because I think we only sold like four blocks or four properties, four accounts. But with the collection that was being done at the time, people paid and made agreements.
The property is removed from foreclosure, I guess, from the tax sale.
Exactly.
Yeah, good.
So, but of course, that's not the amount that comes in.
Sure.
I mean, that's not coming to us, a lot of it goes to the PEs for access fees and. The work costs, so, yeah, just to let you know that, I mean, that's the amount that was sold, but not necessarily what was collected, what was.
What was added to the.
Then our hotel motel, I guess we, I believe we're gonna be over that. Been able to hang in there, it's good, yes.
I wanted to go ahead and, I don't know if you have any questions on number sixteen, item sixteen.
Page one P.
On the agenda.
On the agenda. Number sixteen on the agenda.
Well, I went through it, I think with their state ninety eight fees, or state group fee, so.
I guess, just on the.
Yeah, we'll look at, yeah, so.
Where's that?
I think we're already charging with the maximum, or upon these fees.
Yes, yes, that's the maximum.
Yes.
That all.
Yeah, well, yes, okay. We'll move on to reports and presentation, item number ten is an update on Ram's food service program requested by Mr. Ramon Nandez, one, Mr. Nandez, when?
One, Commissioner. Um, excuse me. As you know, the school year already started as well for for all districts, basically, here in Saba County, everybody else is starting probably next week or following week, depending on what county or school district it is. So to give you an update of what we're doing here, is we're already starting to, well, we've already started serving meals, so we're still doing good in Batlumro Technosias Ashores. The only one that we're still, and, excuse me, Commissioner Arias Sondo reached out, and we're trying to get a community center in San Ignacio as well. I donated the meals, excuse me, last year to San Ignacio. The Boys and Girls Club was there also providing services, I believe. And now that they shut down, or did they shut down the club already?
We are, we vacated the current location, we just are moving back into the school, or the school gym that we used to.
Okay, so they'll be at the schools, basically doing the same thing that we've been doing, they provide the services, basically, over here at the club. Yeah, and we'll be on the other side with the community center. After Mr. Sondo reached out to us. With that being said, I know there's a new director at the new kitchen center, we're still providing the propane gas and so forth for them. We'll buy some things, supplies here and there.
So are you sharing in the kitchen, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen for us is, we keep the kids safe guidelines mandate, including the school districts is three feet apart. So each kid has to be, or each student has to be three feet apart, with or without a mask. Very low ventilation, hand sanitizer and so forth. Staff wears PPE, as soon as the kids get done, so forth, then they have to go out. It has to be congregant meals, there are waivers that are coming out, meaning that they're gonna go, probably gonna go back to grab and goes. Meaning that they probably just pull up and drop, but not yet. The reason for the holdup right now is because of the governor. So because the governor has come on, come off, wear masks and wear masks. It's been, it's been putting pressure on on the Texas educational system, which of course is trickled down the back to where we're at now. So if a kid or a family shows up and they grab a meal and so forth, but decide that they do not want to stay, and we do not have the authority for them to stay there. So they can basically still do what they were doing before, but the meal has to be grabbed indoors.
So you have to have a facility where you dispense the meals, it has to be inside?
Yes, it's basically back when we first started our food program. So our precaution measures is, of course, after the kids are done, we'll do the cleanup. Once the cleanup is done and everything's been sanitized, we'll close the.
And this is five days a week?
Five days a week.
So I think you called me, I guess, last week about the pavilion, I said, well, come visit with us, see if there's any. I think we're starting, are we starting to rent the pavilion out? There's always seems to be an issue on Fridays, one day, I think that was a problem we were having in the past, where we didn't have enough time to. And some of the parties that ran out, that you didn't want to come in maybe Thursday afternoon and start setting up, so. That has been the only conflict I've seen with that center there, so I don't know, I don't see the Lourdes here. But I know we're starting to rent it out, you still want to use the pavilion out, since it's not a grabbing goal, you're gonna have to move the kids inside.
Right, so what, the best, the solution that I come up with for the situation is we work around Saba County's schedule. So if they come in and say, hey, we're gonna use it on Thursday, then we just won't serve on Thursday. Or if we eat it Thursday afternoon, again, we just won't serve on Thursday, we'll go ahead and and work around that schedule, just for the mere fact is. Because when we, when we ended up shutting down in the pavilion, it's about forty, forty five.
Sure, and we want to keep the program going, so, but then we went to grabbing goals, we really never shut down.
No, we didn't, because on the grabbing goals, we were serving on the outside, which was a building, what is it, dance hall, whatever it is right there.
Right, so that really worked out well, and people would just drive, kind of like a drive through, and they would just come in and drive through.
Now, I'm wondering, because of where the buses drop their kids off, which is right next to the centers, they usually just show up, grab their meals, or back then it was a grab and go, only go home, so now they show up, either sit down, eat a meal there, or. Depending on what parents sell them, either way, they're just gonna be able to see that meal there.
And and the eligibility, what, of the kids?
The kids are, it's basically from six months to twenty one, twenty one being they show, if they have a disability, then they're able to eat up to that.
Just for the public to know that, basically, twenty one to be able to.
Yes.
What do you think you signed in San Ignacio, right?
We're gonna go inspect the the facility there, where we're on a community center, and it'll take maybe about fifteen, maybe twenty days because of the backlog that they have over there to you. So.
Do we have any alternative sites, commissioners, on, for the pavilion?
You can use the one that I have here on on pretty poor, where we, they use it for a basketball court, but it's just gonna be like a drive through.
Yeah, they don't want a sit down meal now.
Yeah.
So it's gotta be common, so I guess the pavilion, and, you know, I don't see how many days will be in conflict, but you'll have to work that schedule out with Lourdes and those. They make reservations for that building, so sometimes there is conflict.
The last time I talked to Ms. Gasso was, all I asked her was, if you have a calendar that's already built for that month. Or a two week calendar where you know what's coming up for the following two weeks.
To share it with you.
To share it with me so that we can go ahead and adjust on our end to make sure that we're, everybody's.
So how about, so, I mean, it's a pretty large building, cleaning, what?
We'll be doing the same thing, because there won't be a large amount unless, for whatever reason, everybody decided to show up on one day. We always just, we're off to the right, Ms. Orita's been there as well, Commissioner Manizan's been there as well, where he actually, something like the kitchen is at. And then we'll use maybe two or three tables to that side, behind it, and we'll keep it closer to the area on the right hand side. So it's not that we.
Yeah, if you're, if you're gonna be cleaning on, that's a large building, you clean every day.
No, we just use a portion of, that way, of course, it's a small amount and it's feasible for us.
And you will be maintaining the bathrooms there?
Yes, now, with that being said, what I'd like to do is. We need to have some sort of system for for receiving the building and turning the building in, because in the past, we've had issues to where. Oh, the kids went in there, they, you know, they broke this, they went, they did that, and in reality, well. We'd rather not be fighting, well, you worry about it, it's like, okay, you know what, this is how you turn the building into us, and at the end of the day, this is how we're gonna turn the building.
And there's gonna be normal wear and tear, but, I mean, there's damages made to the building. Their program is able to compensate the company for that or get it fixed.
The last, I mean, the thing was, the last time it was like, oh, when you're doing plumbing, I'm like, oh, wait a minute.
I'll manage that, no, but.
Stuff like that.
It's damages, of course.
Yes.
Well, Commissioner, it's not an action item, but I guess if we just approve, continuing the community center.
It is, there is, there is an action item, there's.
Where?
Item eighteen.
Okay, yeah, there is, so we'll come back to it.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner, bring that up, okay. We will now move to the action items, we will deliberate and consider action on the following items, number eleven is to approve a cooperative agreement between. Saba County and Texas A and M Avrilite Extension Service to formalize the matter in which extension and county government coordinate support for county extension programs.
Judge, I was reviewing the the contract that was submitted.
The R and R and C, oh, I'm.
And it was submitted, and it basically states there that the M O A simply moves our historically unwritten understanding to redocument, it does not change anything related to the way our partnership currently operates, so basically, nothing is changed. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Really, I'm reviewing, just want to make sure that the upcoming budget does include funds to be, because it does make reference.
Yes, and it does.
Okay.
We provide a budget form on your, it's.
Okay.
Or is it already, it doesn't, doesn't have any numbers or anything?
Right, it's vague, but it does, that's what the requirements of the town, I want to make sure that it's included in our budget.
Yes, yeah, we do have some funding.
Yes, that would be cataloged in the.
Okay.
Very good.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Rasa, seconded by Commissioner.
No, no.
Mendoza.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Rasa, any discussion, although in favor of the Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number twelve is to approve the transfer of Porando Rasa Junior from fifteen, zero, one, two, slot number four, at nine ninety eight dollars and cents an hour, effective eight, five, twenty twenty one.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Lee, although in favor of the Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item number thirteen, to approve the hire of Javier Otrinio, labor flash payment, in fifteen, zero, one, two, slot number six, at nine dollars and forty eight cents an hour, effective.
I need to make a change on that one, that, it's Hector Salasang, was at nine dollars, I'm gonna put Hector Salasang, this is lot number six, at nine forty eight.
So it's not Javier Trinio, it's Hector?
Salasang.
Salasang. Salasang.
And then Javier O. Trevino will go to one dollar, but I don't know the spot.
Is he already, oh, you're, you're bringing him in?
Uh, I'm bringing in Javier Trevino, so...
So you're basically moving, yes, from Salasang to a different position, he's already a current county employee, and then your employee would be Javier Trevino.
Motion move.
Just make sure you give him that in. Uh, motion by, uh, Commissioner, uh, Garcia, second, by Commissioner Solis, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number fourteen is to approve the purchase and installation of security cameras to the Justice of the P. precinct one office. I think Judge Gara has been requesting, uh, security cameras, I, I don't know, there's a proposal out there. I haven't spoken with her recently about it.
Judge, we, we go back to, I bring it up every single time, I don't know what, why the J.P.'s cannot be present here to make these requests?
They, they would certainly help us.
I mean, we, we always have questions that we can never get answered because we don't have the representatives here on the board. So I don't, I don't see a, a...
We'll just, yeah, and I, I don't, I haven't talked to Commissioner Rasa to see exactly what, uh... That's just for the, for the...
Do, do we have money, especially on that, is important, has it here, or where is this coming from?
Well, that's, that's gonna be my next question, if it's coming out there, technology fund, technology fund has forty, technology fund has...
Well, we don't have any estimates on it, I don't, I don't think we have a proposal on it, so maybe we can make a...
Motion to table, Judge.
Motion to table?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Mendoza to table, second, by Commissioner Solis, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
A motion table.
If there's no proposal for your also, there's nothing to do.
Item number fifteen is to approve the purchase of a desktop computer and document scanner for the Justice of the P. precinct one office out of the technology fund.
Motion to approve, there's a quote there for two thousand seven fifty-five point nine.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second, by Commissioner Solis?
No, but...
Garcia. Any discussion, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item number sixteen, to approve the imposition of op- optional fees, calendar year, see by twenty twenty-two, I think, uh...
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, second, by Commissioner Rasa. And, and I believe, uh, Commissioner Mendoza's here, she left, that we, we are charging, uh, a missing fee. What it says here is that county, uh, road and bridge, it's a ten-dollar fee for county road and bridge fee, uh, to, to the county road and bridge department, and then a dollar fifty for, uh, child safety fees, and either, uh, for the renewal of the DMV.
We're already at the max, and I'm more reserved to...
Those two, those two categories, so need a motion?
It was the Solis...
Yeah, Solis.
Solis, uh, second, by Commissioner Rasa, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number seventeen is to transfer fund dollars of three hundred and fifty thousand from farm-to-market fund number sixteen to special road and bridge fund fifteen, Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner's morning. Uh, in talking to the consultant, the market floaters, we saw that we have about three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in this, uh, in this fund, and the intention is to move the three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand to the special road and bridge, which is a...
What they're about, how they're bound, you know?
Yeah, and then, uh, hopefully, next, uh, this coming budget year, we'll be able to close out this fund and, and move all funds to the road and bridge, and it'll just be under the road and bridge.
Motion move.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second, by Commissioner Rasa, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
A motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Item number eighteen is to increase the uses of Zapata County pavilion for the continuing, continuing use of the serving meals program provided by ranch serving program.
Judge, this, this Garcia's here, do we have a question for him?
Uh, Ms. Morning, Ms. Garcia, we, we've been discussing the pavilion, and, and, uh, the, the, now they, they're gonna use congregant meals with, with the food program. Uh, and I've spoken with you about some potential conflicts between those, uh, residents that reserve it for their, for their events, and the actual program, and the, and the time it takes to clean it and get it ready. Uh, most of the time that that, uh, pavilion is used on Fridays, Thursdays, or...
Thursdays and Fridays, so it's hard for us to maintain it clean, because all the kids are running like crazy there. Like a daycare for, for camp, so...
Yeah, we, we mentioned that it is a large building to maintain it on a daily basis. Uh, which, uh, Rap- Commissioner Nunn says his staff is, is able to clean it, so...
Well, for the past time, we've not just cleaned it, it's been really messy and...
I'm sorry, Honor, we've been going through this, uh, for almost a year now?
Is that, we're, we're showing our staff, it's got, you know, as a county, we, we wanna help, and we wanna make sure that we're not left with the entire burden of, of having to clean up.
We've never let that building, um, messed up, unclean or unsanitized, on a daily, on a daily basis.
Okay, just as long as we have, we have that agreement that, that you will be able to, to turn it over to... So with, with Garcia, she has a commitment to clean it, uh, get it ready for, uh, somebody who's, who's paying, uh, for, for an event there. That they don't have to, I guess, spend a lot of time getting it ready.
So, which is okay, and, and I understand that. But at the same time, what I'd like also then to request is that if they have an event on Saturday, not to wait till Monday or Tuesday to clean it, because then we won't be able, uh, to serve the kids for, for those two days.
I think that's a reasonable request, so if there's an event on Saturday, we'll, we'll have to go in on Sundays, outside, which we normally do, I believe.
We clean on Monday.
Yes.
So it'll be ready for Monday afternoon?
Yes.
Okay. And the last...
Yeah, we, we, I mean, the county, we've always, we, we want these programs to succeed. We've been a partner of years, for many, many years now. We just, you know, we run it, I guess, small, it's a problem that, uh, we wanna be able to work through.
And you're right, Donna, because this is basically the only one building that we've ever, in all the services that we provide, and so, and everybody else, everywhere else, this is the only one building that really just, um, has been a conflict between...
Those events, the reservations, yes, to go.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, we have a, a two-week notice or a two-week calendar of what she, uh, what is planned out, and we can more than accommodate her or the counter to make sure that it's, the building is taken care of, utilized for their next, next event.
Okay.
A lot, a lot of things were happening. Sure, this is that because the deal of building is not very high, they may get reservations the week of. Probably get a call on Tuesday to reserve it for Thursday, so, uh, you may not be able to get a two-week advance calendar. But obviously, I'll maintain communication on when the building is gonna be reserved, at least a day or two at a time, I think.
And to let your employees know that they need to maintain it clean, because on Friday, it's always super dirty. The lady told us that she knew that she had to maintain it clean.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll go work through that, uh, but, uh...
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the last thing I ask is, um, uh, to have access to that building, uh, for those days that we're gonna be utilizing the building. So, uh, do we go back and ask her daily for the key that we used to have? Or does she have to go open and close it every...
No, I'm gonna give you a key, like always.
You can, you can provide a key to the...
They had a key, but they weren't, I took it away because they weren't using it, they were giving the meals outside.
Right, on the grab and go, yeah. So, yeah, so you'll be able to provide them with a key?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Um... Well, no, you don't send in Nocia, if you ever go serving Nocia, we'll help you out with your... If it, I mean, I know that if it grows up, it's been pretty good, and we need any help, then Nocia will help you back stop.
I appreciate that, and Commissioner, and, and your precinct, we have the, uh, church, uh, there that we've been serving for the last, I think, almost, for one, almost, four years now. There, and in the partnership that we had, of course, with, uh, Mr. Garcia and, and Isondo, and then Fatu Mendoza, Commissioner with, uh, Fatu Norepe. So, everything has worked out, yes, everything has worked out for the last four years, one on five, we've been blessed. Um, not much with the program itself, but being able to serve the community and the kids here, uh, where it all started. Now, Grand, the, the nonprofit program has already expanded South Texas and also Central Texas. So we're, we're all over, um, doing the same thing that we do here, which is making sure that these kids are being fed, um, and so...
Well, I know that they've been calling and sending us with them with what they're gonna start serving, so that's why, I mean, I can call, we're gonna do the star ones, we're coming back with the meals, so... I know that it's needed, and I really appreciate, uh, the attention, Commissioner, also, Commissioner Judge.
Yeah, we have, you know, the, the relationship, five years going on, but using county private facilities, and we've been a partner with you, yes?
We've done, uh, we've done some good things, and even, um, with the Boys and Girls, uh, we did some good things.
How many kids are expecting to, to be?
Right now, we're, we're expecting a hundred and fifty, and that's low volume. So we're expecting about one, okay, I'll, I'll go between one, uh, one twenty, one fifty, depending what the buses are showing up.
Special number, we have, so, yeah.
That's Nocia, that we have like fifty or sixty, that's Nocia.
And those are the meals that we, uh, donated last year, uh, to...
So you're going with, with last year's number?
Yes, because we didn't have, uh, uh, the facility there yet, so we went in, we went and donated the meals. So, um, yes, uh, any other?
That's, that's good, so we're, we're good to go? We got a motion, a second, right?
No, just the first.
Motion by Commissioner Solis to operate the pavilion? Second, by Commissioner Isondo, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge.
Item number nineteen is to request office space to render behavioral health and substance use treatment services to the members of Zapata County community, requested by Mr. Manuel Sanchez?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioner, good morning. May I approach to this, this, this document? Good morning, everyone. I have a specific goal in mind today, to talk about it, I mean, for office space, but before I do that, I wanna talk a little bit about behavioral health services and the need our area in South Texas has for health services. I'm proud to say that in two thousand and ten, I co-founded Piter, a nonprofit behavioral health and substance use treatment center. We started Piter in West County because we identified the difference in need for these services. For a population of our size, almost three hundred thousand. In two thousand and ten, we had less than twenty-five providers to serve all those people. Ninety-five percent of those providers were rendering services with a huge cost that came with. Very few of those services were rendered to the public at no charge. What we did was we set up our organization to provide those services at a very, very minimal cost, because we didn't want economics to be a barrier. Suicide rates in our community were high. Issues with an address behavioral health and substance issues were high. And if you think about it, just living on the border with substance use issues, unfortunately, they're always very rampant. We have no inpatient treatment centers, and as I stand here today, ten years later, we still don't. But we're trying to make a difference as much as we can with minimal resources. So why am I here today, guys? I'm here today because I have no doubt that in Zapata County, these resources are scarce as well. And I'm hoping we can change that. I've been in contact with Commissioner Isondo, we've been talking, that's why I'm here today. Ms. Garcia was very kind last week to show us potential office space to use, but it doesn't look like that's gonna work out, because we're hoping to maybe partner with the Children's Advocacy Center and use some space where they're currently using as well. And again, that didn't come to fruition. What I'm hoping is that there's an opportunity that maybe that you all can help us secure some office space, hopefully at no cost to the organization, again, we're a nonprofit, but in return, we can have a presence in Zapata County to render these services. If the pandemic underscored anything, it could maybe showcase the need for these kinds of services. Sadly, suicide rates in West County are still high. I don't have the figures for Zapata County, I'm hoping maybe that it's not as an army, but if it is, maybe that's where we can come in and make a difference. What I'm proposing is to have a presence in this county with your support, so that we can work with people. We pretty much have several packages we can put on the table. Thirty-five dollars for seven sessions, that's dirt cheap. And I can have some, uh, com- a clinical intern who's being supervised by a licensed person to render those services. Or thirty-five dollars a session by a fully licensed person, which again is dirt cheap. And if somebody has insurance for these services, we can work through that as well. And, not yet, but hopefully one day, we can do what we're doing in West County, provide psychiatric care and primary medical care for people that don't have access to those services through other avenues. I'm hoping today is the start of that relationship between Piter and Zapata County, where we can have a presence here, even if it's once or twice a month. Hopefully, that's where we can begin to bridge that gap in here.
Do we have, uh, open space, uh, for the judge?
Well, Commissioner, we, we do offer some space there at, at the clinic, uh, for visiting doctors that come in from time to time.
Where is that, Judge? I'm sorry.
Uh, Zapata County clinic, there's some office space that is not associated with LMC's clinic.
I see.
That, uh, visiting doctors come in from time to time to see their patients, and of course, we wanna, uh, enhance our, our medical services here, so we, we do offer that, that office, uh, there, and I think it would...
That's actually the location I was...
Yeah. We don't have any office space that's free, that, you know, you can move in exclusively for you, but I think, uh, we have to maybe coordinate and see, uh, how many doctors are coming in, uh, and try to work around their schedule. You're saying you might come in once or twice a month?
Correct.
I think that might be something that, that might work for you. Constance, what, I don't, I mean, we're already offering that space, uh, to other doctors that charge for profit, uh, that, that do make, uh, that charge fee. I don't see a problem with continuing that, uh...
Well, if, if they're offering certain type of services that...
Are not available here.
Are not available, and, and we, the Commissioner's fourteen, it could be a, a public health need, and that's something that could conceivably be, especially if it's a low-cost, uh, type of, uh, counseling-type service. Furthermore, this can also be used possibly by child protective services cases, uh, also, uh, any type of criminal type of... You do drug counseling as well?
Yes, we do, we do a lot of testing as well.
Right, uh, so that, that can be used, uh, both juvenile and, uh, adult county court.
Mr. Sanchez, um, I'm very passionate about mental health. I do serve on the board for Border Region, and I know we are the organization in the area that services the rare population for those, for those needs. Uh, do you, uh, work at all with Border Region?
Yes, we do, we have an actually a memorandum of understanding with them, because we have three significant players in West County. Border Region, who serves as a mental health authority, ourselves, and Scan, and I know Border Region and Scan also have a presence here.
Yes.
Our, our aim is a little different in terms of our scope of work, but even if it were exactly the same, the need is no greater than what these three entities can provide in West County. Once again, I don't have the figures in Zapata County, but I'm assuming that there is a need. Border Region generally focuses on people with severe behavioral health and substance use issues. Scan usually has a checklist of people that need to qualify for their programs. The one difference Piter puts on the table is, we serve anyone, because we know human beings in general deal with stress. Stress equates to behavioral health or substance use behaviors generally, when somebody doesn't have proper coping skills. So if an adolescent is having relationship issues at home or in social relationships, so they're getting bullied. If adults are having those very same issues in their own world, people can just walk into our doors like they would any other professional's clinic, and ask for those services, and we'll schedule them for counseling, without having to go through a battery of assessments to see if they qualify or not. That's the ones, the one difference we put on the table.
But I, I, I will say, Judge, that I know from, uh, child protective service cases that we have, Judge, a lot of the parents are unable to travel as a result of their immigration status, Judge, so they're still re- uh, in need of the services, but cannot travel, so during this whole time, it's been very difficult for them to, uh, satisfy the requirements of the service plan provided by child protective services, because they're unable to see the different counselors and all these, uh, types of things. So, uh, to have a presence here in Zapata, I think, would be of a great benefit, uh, in assisting with the, you know, uh, from my standpoint, of course, the, the adjudication of those cases, but also for the mental health of our communities.
And of course, my question was not to squash your intent, it was basically just, I just wanted to make, uh, make it known that if you all did not have a partnership with Border Region, we could possibly look into that. But since there is already an existing partnership, uh, there's always a need for these types of services. I mean, uh, there's a lot of people in our community that require these services, and the more we can help to bring those services to our community, I think it's greater for our community. Uh, I guess now we'll just have to work out the logistics of it.
Yes.
And your point was in last, with Mr. Nocia, I did not interpret it, but thank you, could clarify it.
And Mr. Sanchez, how would this work, uh, you're, you're stating you'd be here once, twice a month?
Depending on the arrangements, we can even increase that. Unfortunately, right now, all of the funding that we have coming in is tied to West County. We don't have any funding that comes in that allows us to serve people outside of West County.
So my question is this, if you have a suicidal, uh, or someone with suicidal tendencies wanting, wanting your services, would they have to wait two, three weeks? would they have to wait two, three weeks until you arrive here, or?
I can see how ineffective that sounds, Commissioner Solis, and I would love to sit down with you guys to see how we can minimize the time between the crisis call coming in and our presence. Exactly. I would love to have those conversations. I don't want to propose that we're going to cure our ill, so to speak, because there's barriers everywhere you look. But I believe this conversation, I'm hoping, will be able to correct some of the issues that you all have already identified that don't exist in your community. I will tell you one thing, Commissioner Solis and everyone else, in the way though, we've really overcome a lot of the issues when we first started because most of our issues were connected to finances. But through fundraising, we've been able to establish an effective system to work with our citizens. And that is why I passed out that flyer as well, because whatever monies we get from this upcoming event, we can earmark to increase our presence in this community and maybe the process even look for funding to serve this community so we can have the same reaction time we have in West County. We have to respond within sixty minutes to a crisis call, whether it's related to suicide or any other emotional duress issue. I would love us to have a similar system in place for Zapata County, that when we get a crisis call from any of your residents, our response time will be that fast as well. Just make that a goal, perhaps.
Mr. Sanchez, will you be available for enforcement as well?
Yes, sir. We work very closely with the police department and the sheriff department in West County. I would love to establish that as well. One of the recent grants we got speaks to what the sheriff just asked, that we work closely with enforcement so that you all ever detain someone, and it's identified that that person has an emotional or a substance use issue, that we intervene and we provide that solution or that process to help that individual. I would love to have that here as well. There we go.
Aye.
Well, I think we can facilitate looking at that office that we have available, office space, that would be a shared office.
Of course.
Maybe that would satisfy...
I'll make them take the book here.
Motion by Commissioner Garza to off...
I guess Commissioner pending your rule.
Yes, second.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion? Although the fair is the eye. Motion carries.
And is that what the next step is?
Yes, Ms. Garza.
We have her phone number. I was going to give it to her.
Okay.
Lupita has her phone number.
Right, okay. So can you provide that? I'm sure you have to get going.
I'll get it to her.
Okay.
We got your phone number. Thank you for opening the door. I appreciate it.
Ms. Garza, sir.
Ms. Garza, would...
Well, I'm Lupita.
Would you happen to have a key to the...
No, Lupita has it.
I have Lupita. Lupita has our best of phone number.
Can I do one more thing, and that's it, and now I'll... During the bowling tournament, they were planning on having on September the second. If you guys can help us sponsor a lane, each lane is a hundred and twenty-five dollars, and if you all don't bowl, what we do is we get sponsors so that kids, especially kids with special needs can participate, and maybe we can work our nation with transportation. And on the evening, Thursday, September second, when we have our bowling tournament, maybe some of you from Zapata County present so they can participate. We're going to have trophies. We're going to make it faster, the superhero theme, and maybe each of you all from your respective domains can sponsor a team of kids to participate.
Okay.
But I think you...
Thank you, Judge.
Got any checkbooks with you, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Next month.
Got a motion in second? Did we vote on this or no?
Yes.
See?
Yes. We've all got some consent items. Line item transfers.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And twenty-two, motion by Commissioner Garza to line items presented. Second by Commissioner Mendosa, although the fair is the eye. Motion carries. Item number twenty, the adjourned session item.
I'll make a motion to group session.
Motion by Commissioner Garza to adjourn the session. Second by Commissioner Solis. The item should be learned is to discuss and take possible action on policies and procedures regarding COVID-19, except for the session requested pursuant to Texas government title five-five-one, subchapter D, section five-five-one, from zero-seven-four, personnel matters. We are now adjourned session.
Is it back on? Yeah.
Yeah, I make a multiple back to regulation.
Motion by Commissioner Garza to return the regular session taken by Commissioner Mendoza. For the record, no action was taken in the declaration. We'll move to item number 20. It's to discuss and take possible action on policies and procedures regarding COVID-19.
There's no make a motion to be about policy for compensation exclusively for first responders involving COVID-19.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I make a multiple.
These are rules, Judge, that are being adopted by the state of Texas. Judge comes at M refers with the court of not taking action to adopt appearance by the county prior to this September 1st.
And will be exclusively for the first.
For the first. I make a multiple adjourn.
First responders are thinking so that no one.
Huh? Okay.
Adjourned.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Garza to adjourn, taken by Commissioners Cadiz. We are not adjourned. Thank you Commissioners.
Joining Commissioners, have a good day. Excuse me.
Come on down and go again.
Go again.